All right, good evening and welcome to the Thursday, May 25th, 2023 School Committee Meeting. It's a little unusual to have your superintendent open the meeting, but I am Carol Kavanaugh, superintendent, and once a year, this is my honor. So tonight, we have our reorganization, and I will read a little bit of our policy, which is Policy BDA, and that's what governs the reorganization here in Hopkinton. So it says, "For the purpose of organizing, at its first regular meeting following the district's annual elections, the school committee will elect from its membership a chairperson and vice-chairperson. Both the chairperson and vice-chairperson will hold their respective offices for a term of one year or until a successor is elected." And so what we need to have to get started is a quorum, and we do have a quorum here. It's a little bit interesting because you'll see that we have to have a majority of that quorum, and unusually, we could have a two-to-two tie here, but let's see how that goes. All right. So nominations for the office of chairperson will be made from the floor by another member of the school committee without the need for it to be seconded. The chairperson will be elected by a majority roll call vote of the members present and voting. If no nominee receives a majority vote, the election will be declared null and void, and nominations will be reopened. And so I am looking for a nomination for Chair of the School Committee for the 2324 school year.
I'd like to nominate Nancy Kavanaugh.
Okay. So we need to have a roll call vote, and I will start with you, Amanda, and come back to Nancy. So Nancy Kavanaugh for Chair of the School Committee for the 2324 year.
Absolutely, yes.
Holly? Susan?
Aye.
And Nancy, yourself.
I am an aye.
Okay. Thank you. So it is unanimous, and Nancy will now be the chair, which means that she will now take over the election of a vice-chair for the 2324 school year.
So I would seek a nomination for the vice-chair of the school committee for the 2324 school year.
I nominate Amanda.
Okay, so, and I don't think we need a second for that as well as that?
Correct.
Okay, so I will start with you, Holly.
Well, I don't know if this is allowed. I had wanted to be considered as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because this would be my last year.
I rescind. Can I rescind?
No, 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 no. We can vote on this. It's fine.
Okay, do we want to have discussion on that? I don't know if you have any?
Because I didn't know if that's what you wanted to do. I didn't realize how the election went. I've never, I don't remember from last year, probably because I don't remember anything from last year. So I didn't know if you had wanted to serve as vice-chair for another year, and I had wanted to have a discussion about it.
Yep.
Yeah. Because I don't want to say, you're very, you're very good at it, but I just, you know.
I enjoy serving as vice-chair. But, you know, it's a committee decision, so.
Yeah.
It's fine. You know, I enjoy doing it. It'll be my last year as well.
Yeah.
I just want to remind everybody that you don't need to feel compelled to stick with your gut feeling of it being your last year, should you change your mind.
No, I know.
January, February, March. But I understand for these purposes. Yes.
So what is the, should we, should we go ahead and vote on this and like have another nomination? Or should we rescind? Like how?
So it's Susan's motion, so I do think that you are allowed to rescind or allowed to, that that would be?
I would rescind my nomination.
Okay. Is there a?
Well, I don't, so I don't, I didn't want to make it be weird, and I think I made it weird, and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's fine.
It's, it's, I don't want to, if you want, if you wanted to do it for another year, I'm not going to.
It's voted fresh every year. So it's fine. Like, you know, we could, we could have a different vote. It's, it's fine. Okay. I mean, I like to do it.
How long have you done it?
I've been vice-chair, I've been chair once in the pandemic. That was fun.
That's good. That was fun.
I've been vice-chair.
You were very good chair.
Is it just this year? Was I vice-chair last year?
I think this year.
Yeah. I feel like it's a little long. Yeah. I think, I might have been two years of vice-chair.
Okay, you know what? Because I'm thinking the pandemic was the year before. You're right.
Yeah, I think it was two years as vice-chair. This is, this is now my sixth year, my second, end of my second term.
And it's your sixth year as vice-chair?
No, 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 sixth year on the, on the committee.
On the committee.
I think I've been two years as vice-chair and one year as chair.
Okay. So.
I'll nominate Holly.
Yeah.
Okay. If you want to start, we can do.
Do I vote first?
We're going to do a roll call, if that's okay, then come back.
Yes.
Yeah. I know, I know, I'm sorry. This is my fault.
So.
I'm going to say no.
Okay, so alternatively, we could also wait to, until Adam is here.
That would be good.
Does that meet people's?
I will, I will rescind that nomination.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
Had I known from the start?
No, you don't, you don't have to apologize for anything. You didn't do anything wrong.
It's always awkward. Everything that we do on camera is challenging because we can't talk outside of here.
Yeah.
So it's, it is something to get comfortable with because this is just how it goes.
Yeah.
And, you know, however it works, it'll be great.
Okay. Okay, so I, the next piece, because we're going to come back to this, the next piece on the agenda is, it's actually listed that we're going to go into executive session right now, but we're actually going to move that out of order with the permission of the committee so that we can have the benefit of having had the public discussion regarding the Director of Student Services and having made a decision about that before we go into executive session, and then we can have the executive session to prepare for negotiations with the selected Student Services candidate at that time. So if that is, just by consensus, okay with people? Just in terms of it. In that case, then I would seek a motion to adjourn this meeting with the purpose of reconvening at 7:00. And we will have a little bit of a break. H Kim can take a break, and we will come back at 7:00 and start fresh with the Pledge of Allegiance and public comment, go through everything, and then at the end, we'll go into executive session before adjourning for the night.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Is that a motion by Susan?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I would look for a second. Second by Holly, all those in favor? Aye. And we are adjourned at 6:07, and I will see everybody at 7:00 tonight. Thank you.
All right, our phone's very loud. Good evening, and welcome back to the Thursday, May 25th, 2023 reorganization, reorganization meeting and regular meeting of the school committee. I, we started the meeting at 6:00 and we took a break, and at this time, I'm going to invite everybody here to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome. It's exciting to have a studio full of people here with us, and I think we'll start with public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to make a public comment, I would invite you to come up. I know a lot of people are here for a recognition, which is exciting as well. Okay, if there are no public comments, then I would like to go right into the recognition because that is exciting. Okay, so tonight, we are here to recognize the Kryptonites from Grade 8 at Hopkinton Middle School, and I am going to invite their advisor to come on up and say a little bit about them.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hello.
My name is Pat Allen. I am, I teach at the middle school, and I am the RoboHillers robotics coach. We had the pleasure of having three amazing teams qualify for VEX Worlds. It's a world championship, 50 countries from around the world competing at the middle school level in robotics. And today, I'm very pleased to present to you our full-on world championship middle school excellence robotics team, the Kryptonites, which is an amazing feat, to be quite honest. So if you want to come on up here, they've got some, some bling. They've got some trophies to show you. We've got a robot. And also, we have our engineering notebook, which I'd love to pass around so you can see all of their hard work. Oh, there we go, our sixth member. So these are all eighth graders, and I'm very pleased to introduce you to Rudri Pachori, Suhani Patni, Pranav Raja, Padanpatia, Sri Desari, and Pallad Shabha. And they're all heading to eighth grade with Mr. Scott next year. They've already started working on the new year, but they are here to answer any questions that you might have about this incredible event that we just attended.
Wow. So just for clarity, this, this means that you are the best middle school team in the world?
Correct.
That is pretty amazing. So can you tell us a little bit about the robot? Because that is, that is a very cool-looking, high-tech.
So this robot is built for the VEX IQ competition. So it has many different functions and subsystems on it. So some cool parts about this robot is that it can be hot-swappable. So basically, what the robot can do is, since basically the game is shooting discs into, like taking discs from different dispensers and shooting them into goal zones, we have our robot that can, that takes the discs from the dispenser. It uploads it into our ramp system where since like discs don't always land perfectly into the robot, our ramp goes up and down to shuffle the discs, and it'll make it flat. It'll, it'll make it fast so we can easily pass through our shooter mechanism, which is a wheel that'll spin, and it'll shoot it into the goal zone. Some really cool features about this robot also is this extension arm. So there is a size requirement for the, for the robot. We had to figure out how to make a really long arm extend with, with the small area of space to work. So we ma, we made this cool thing called a scissor lift. And basically, what it does is, when it's collapsed all the way, it, it barely takes up any space, like takes that much space right now. When it's fully extended, it can reach a really long length.
Is it, what does it have to reach for? Is it gathering the discs? Or is it like sensing where it's going?
So this arm is, it's to get like bonus points. So wherever the discs land, you have to try and put this in where the most amount of discs are.
I get you.
So you get the most amount of points.
And is it remote control?
Yeah, so we have both a remote controlled and we also have an autonomous mode. So obviously, driver is much easier than autonomous controller. And yeah.
So does it have sensors as well to like find the discs? Is it, when it's in autonomous mode?
When it's in autonomous, like the dispensers are in set places, so we always know where they are. So what we could basically do is tell it to go to this certain position, and when it goes there, it'll, it'll get the discs.
Awesome. What was the hardest part of the build? Because this, this like all looks hard. It's frustrating.
Yeah.
So what was the hardest part for all of you? What did you think the hardest piece designing was? Just like design-wise, getting it right?
Yeah, so I think the hardest part of the robot was making all the elements we needed fit into a specific size limit.
Okay, you decided limitations too. Yeah. Oh, boy.
What about you? What do you think?
I think the hardest part of when we were designing our robot was our designing of our shooter because we wanted like a shooter that can consistently shoot at the maximum goal zone to maximize our score. So we tried many designs, and like through rigorous testing, we found that the design that we currently had is the most effective.
That's awesome.
So as a builder, we had built many bots. Like, we started in the summer to get like a three-month advantage to get to know the game better so we can score as many points as we can in the one-minute given time. So we had a previous shooter mechanism, which would have the disc stack on, and it would be connected by a rubber band. And we'd use like certain geometry. So we'd make an X, and there's a little part on the thing which would go back. It pull it, but once it couldn't reach, the rubber band would push it forward, and it would propel the disc into the certain goal zone. So it can do that. We had made a double version of this in order to score more discs easily in like one minute. But we found that this design, since it uses the ramp, it was able to score like a lot more discs. You're able to score about like 20 discs in about 10, 15 seconds. But with the previous one, you were shooting 20 discs in about 30 seconds, which is half of the time. So we had made this idea, and it was like really helpful. And also, the size limitation was a big deal.
In my opinion, I think the hardest part was to like put together everything that we needed to do in one bot that fit all the size limitations in that one-minute time we were given. So we needed a bot that was very efficient and fast and good at its job so we could do like the most we can and finish before the timer runs out.
I think the most challenging part was optimizing the use of motors because this challenge required a lot of different mechanisms, and you need motors to make those mechanisms work. So one thing we did is our end game mechanism that Pallad was showing you. We connected that with one motor. So we connected two, two mechanisms with one motor, which helped us use motors for the drag train for something else that needed more energy. And so if I can show you. So this was our end game, and then this was another mechanism used for a different dispenser. And they're both connected with one motor, but they're, because they, they work similarly with these gears. And so when this turns, this hits it, and this comes out. So I thought that was just a unique design.
Very cool. I would say that the most challenging part was the efficiency. So because we were only given one minute of time, we need to figure out a way that made it easy for the driver to operate the robot so it could go as fast as possible. So some ways we did this was, for example, when we were collecting discs from a dispenser, we would program it in a way so that as it was collecting discs, it would also, the ramp would automatically shuffle up and down by itself without the drivers have to like operate a certain button. And this way, it was, the robot was able to adjust itself to make it easier for the drivers.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So everything is done in one minute. That's how long it matches. And so it has to be a very efficient robot. Every year, the challenge changes. So next year's challenge has been released. These guys are not doing it because, you know, they have to go to high school. But it's already been released. And so, for example, the dispensers that they're talking about, those were three different types of dispensers, right? So one that you had to move to spit them out that way, another that you had to push, and then a number of discs fell out, and another that had to be, it was like a seesaw. And so they were, they were stored here, and you had to seesaw them into your robot. So when they talk about the ability to have an efficient robot, they have to think about all of those elements. So, and then putting those into the constraints that's required by VEX, six motors max, 19 by 11 by 15 footprint. All of those things that we have, it's a pretty cool process to see them, to see them try and figure out how to be better. And this robot is, would you say, it's a thousand times better than the one you did, you had in the fall? And the one they had in the fall was pretty fantastic, to be honest. Clearly.
Who designed your t-shirts?
So, yeah. So I do the front, we do them all. So I have a cricket, and I'm a multitasking coach. And then they help design the back. You want, somebody want to do that? So they have the, sort of, their Kryptonites. And so I work with the students if, if they have an idea. Sometimes I'm a little bit more involved than other times. Sometimes students just give me a, just give me a design. And so we make it, we try and make it happen so that we're consistent. We all represent Hopkinton very well, and yet we have our own identities because this year I had 19 teams. And so 19 different groups that were competing. So it was a very large group. So they each have their individual identities, but I always say that we are still all RoboHillers.
So 19 teams of, are they all the same size, your teams?
This year, we had, typically, they're between six to eight members on a team.
That's an impressive number of kids that you've got involved.
Yes.
Okay, can I, can I have to ask about this?
Yes.
Beautiful, beautiful work of art. It is an engineering notebook. I mean, I know the importance of this kind of work. It's, can be seen as very tedious. It's so critical to what you do. How did, how did you create this? Who did this?
So I.
I thought it was actually typewritten. I'm like, oh, no. I mean, it's beautiful.
So after each meeting, or not after each meeting, after each update to the robot, we would document in the notebook like everything we changed, why we changed it, and how we changed it. And so you can see in the notebook, whenever we added like pictures or drawings of the robot, there would always be labels as to how we built this and an explanation of why we changed it. And every time, we also made changes to the autonomous code. We also put pictures of that and of the code itself. So in case, if something ever happens to the code or even the robot, we can always look back and see how we did it in case we need to do it again. And then in there, we also included testing. So we included scores and also graphs of how our scores increased over time in the notebook. So we can look back, see how much we've improved, and also if we need to change anything.
Wow, I have to, your accomplishments are amazing, but the skills you have applied to this project, what you've learned, your process, is going to carry you for a long time. It's very, very impressive. You guys are very impressive. Thank you so much for representing Hopkinton.
Yeah. Why don't you show us your bling?
Oh, yes.
So they each have two, one that everybody who qualifies for World, that's an incredible accomplishment. There are 4,500 teams worldwide in middle school competing in VEX IQ. Only about 800 or so-ish teams made it to Worlds. They're the best of the best. And so everybody got that bronze-like tru, medal. Thank you. And then the gold is for world champions.
So number one out of 4,500 teams?
Correct.
Wow.
For excellence. And I will say, I mean, there are different things, and you can see that they've won different awards. There's something called teamwork champion. Those are the students who did the best in the, in the actual working with another team to score the highest number of points. I will also say, these are our third-place teamwork champions in our division. They lost to the people who ultimately became the world champions, so you can't really be too sad about that. But there's only one excellence award. And as you noticed on the video earlier, it is a combination of performance, the notebook. They had interviews. We had interviews that were remote prior to Worlds. They had another two interviews at Worlds, and they'd had interviews throughout the season at other events. So they won, they won excellence at Southern New England region, for the Southern New England region. And then they brought it home at Worlds.
Amazing.
They were impressive.
Amazing. Anybody have anything else before? I'd like to get a picture with you guys, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Did you take the students by yourself?
No, I.
I had all these parents.
So at the high school, we do have fewer parents. They're a little bit older, so they can go to Worlds on their own. At, in the middle school, we do require at least one parent or guardian for each student.
And do you do like combined ticketing and things like that?
We, I mean, we try. Some people traveled with each other. I always want the parents, the family members, they quite actually pay for their way. So I want them to be the most cost-effective they can. So sometimes that means us traveling together, staying near each other, and sometimes that doesn't work. So we, as a school, we paid for the registrations for each of the teams. And the school was generous enough to pay for my expenses as well. So, but the parents paid for. And they did some fundraising as well because we did some other things, like t-shirts and things like that. And it was, it was fun. We had a lot of fun, I think.
I would imagine, yeah. I used to take teams to a, a national.
Yeah.
It's always.
It's, it's, it's unreal if you've never been. It's an amazing experience.
And especially to have all the parents. The chaperoning is all, a lot off your back.
Yes, they were, we were all, I think understandably, just shocked when they said our names.
We saw the video just ahead of the meeting. It really was an exciting little thing. And, you know, to all of your parents, I'm sure they're incredibly proud. Your children are amazing. I'm just impressed with how well they're able to stand here and explain it to those of us who are not quite as versed in robotics. So well done. We are, okay, we're generous to some of us, but at all would be more appropriate. So let's take a photo. And Mrs. Allen, thank you to you.
Thank you.
I can't imagine how much time you're spending. It's, it's appreciated.
Thank you. We go over there.
Do you want to do it back here? Is that, or?
Oh, yeah. Maybe we could all stand in together.
Yeah.
Would you guys want to sit? Would you like to stay and stand behind me?
Are we going here?
I don't know. Let's put the kids in front. Oh, boy. Although I'm not, I'm not sure I'm holding up to be seen.
If you were all sitting, then the kids could stand behind you.
All right, today's going to come out. We don't know what we're doing.
That will fill up, make sure.
Can you get us off?
Yeah. Here we go. Alex or Talis. Put your key fob on. If you want some pull trigger. I'll, I'll hold the notebook.
Okay, can you guys slide that way? Yeah, it feels like you're doing.
You good?
Just trying more, it's just shortening. Oh yeah. The beginning is super.
Thank you so much for giving us an opportunity.
Oh my god. Okay, now the whole table's gonna tip this way. Alright. So that, that's hard to top that. That is definitely the highlight, I would say, for tonight. So that moves us into uh, reports and we have a computer science report and I'm gonna invite Mr. Scott up, um, because I know he's part of-
Absolutely.
Part of that.
Hi, Ms. Kavanaugh. Thank you. Good evening to everyone. I wanna uh, as uh, as Mr. Scott makes his way up to the uh, to the microphone, I wanna uh, extend great gratitude, not only for having to follow that with a slideshow, um, with some charts and numbers, but in, with all sincerity, the appreciation for giving us the chance tonight to showcase uh, some of the great work that's happening, K to twelve. Um, it just ha- so happens that so much of it matches very closely and carefully to what we saw manifested tonight with our students. So um, I'm hoping that our slideshow's going to come up in a minute. So tonight, I, I, I do have the honor of being joined um, by Mr. Scott, who serves not only as one of our uh, faculty in our business, technology and engineering department, but he also serves as the subject matter leader for grade six to twelve in that, um, in that area. Uh, and we'll talk a little bit more about the um, the work that he does, uh, and the role that he plays along with his faculty and, and staff tonight. To begin, I wanna draw a line between two terms that often get um, combined, which are actually very different. Digital literacy and computer science. Digital literacy is uh, essentially, anytime we take existing technology and we help individuals learn to use it, and use it with competence, and use it in a safe and civic manner. When we talk about computer science, we shift a little bit and we talk about adapting existing technology or creating brand-new technology. The state of Massachusetts, through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, does have a curriculum framework, um, which does blend together digital literacy and computer science. The work that we talk about tonight is grounded in this document. It's a document from twenty sixteen, which might feel like a lifetime ago, especially when we're talking about technology. But I can, I can tell you that the, the threads that, that run through it, the competencies and the core concepts and expectations are ones that are just as relevant today as they were in twenty sixteen. The way that the document is set up, and I, I promise this is as deep as I'm gonna go into the frameworks, which is at least a hundred-plus pages, um, it's just to give you a sense of how it is structured. So there is a series of learning progressions that span K to twelve. They're organized around four core areas. The first one being computing and society, digital tools and collaboration, computing systems, and conceptual thinking. And if you look at that screen, you can see that there is no specific end for any one of those strands at any particular grade. The expectation is that students K to twelve all have the opportunity to experience and engage with um, all four of those strands developmentally at any point along the way. The state, in that document, I think I fit, because I have one more thing I wanna talk to about that. In the introduction, there is a vision statement, which I think does an excellent job of capturing what it is we're hoping for. And so I'm gonna read it to you. It reads, "Digital literacy and computer science knowledge, reasoning and skills are essential, both to prepare students for personal and civic efficacy in the twenty-first century and to prepare and inspire a much larger and more diverse number of students to pur- to pursue the innovative and creative careers of the future." "The ability, the abilities to effectively use and create technology to solve complex problems are the new and essential literacy skills of the twenty-first century." So as we jump into this conversation tonight, I do wanna lay a little bit of ground, a little bit of context as we jump in. The conversation around screen time has not been something that has, has lacked any column inches or any, any airtime. The CDC has issued warnings and recommendations. Um, earlier this year, the American Psychiatric Association, um, followed up, um, some congressional testimony on the topic. Just last week, Dr. Kavanaugh issued a superintendent's blog, uh, reminding us of the importance of that. And just yesterday, um, the United States Surgeon General issued a warning, a, a public health warning, um, claiming that we as a society do not yet know the implications and possible detriments of adolescent screen time and adolescent social media usage. But he did say, um, that there was a quote, "profound risk of harm" for adolescent use of social media. Getting even more current, just this morning, Dr. Kavanaugh, I, Dr. Kavanaugh and I were present for our association's um, springtime meeting and one of the things that the commissioner talked about was the need for school districts in the state in general to be thinking about, um, what it, what social media usage looks like, what access to phones during school day looks like, and how we as, as an institution, as a, as a profession, need to really be thinking about that. At the same time, we were also talking this morning at that very same meeting about preparing for a future that we don't yet know for our students. That we are mindful and need to be ever, ever more mindful, that we don't know the, the future, the, the, the structure, the needs that our students are gonna be entering when they go into the workforce in ten, twenty, or thirty years. What we do know, though, is that we have the challenges of artificial intelligence. We know we have the challenge of shifting into a post-industrial society. We also know that on any given day in Massachusetts, there are between fifteen and twenty thousand computer science jobs open. We know that the starting average salary for those positions is one hundred five thousand dollars a year. So there is a need, there is an opportunity, and we owe it to our students to make sure that they have everything they need to jump into that work successfully. So where does all of this live? Where does the digital literacy live? Where does the computer science live? I'm gonna give you a quick snapshot and then I'm gonna let Mr. Scott talk much more in detail about what it actually looks like in our, in the halls of our schools. Now first, of course, it lives in our business and technology and engineering classes. Students have the opportunity to engage in those, grade six through twelve. It also lives in our library and media classes, especially at the elementary level. You'll learn a little bit more about what that looks like tonight. It lives in visual art when students are learning digital photography. It lives in science when students are asked to design, test, and engineer. It lives in our literacy and English programs when students are engaging in creating podcasts or blogs to communicate their ideas, their thinking, and their stances. And it certainly lives in our social emotional learning programs, sometimes as explicit instruction and sometimes embedded throughout the course of our day as we make sure that we're focusing on creating students that can enter the world as social beings, as empathetic beings, as responsible beings. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to my colleague, Mr. Scott, to talk a little bit about what it looks like in the schools.
Alright, thanks Jeff. Appreciate it. Um, so it's interesting. One of the things you touched upon was, you know, the unknown, what jobs exist in twenty, thirty years for some of these kids, right? I mean, hopefully by then I'll be retired. And we'll all be enjoying ourselves, right? But uh, what's interesting is people always mention that. And I remember I had a discussion a long time ago with a superintendent I used to work for and uh, very concerned about all that. And I remember saying that if you understand technology and you understand uh, how it functions at a logic level, you'll always be able to adapt to whatever's coming next. And if you know how things work, you're never a slave to technology. So the idea is, become a person that's knowledgeable, be a person that can use tools. And then, you know, next level in terms of computer science is, can you create? You know, can you build? Can you make things productive? You know, you see kids here that have, uh, you know, taking something that's, I like this, because it provides them with, you know, immediate feedback. You guys know when you do, like your autonomous programming, nobody tell, has to tell you how it's going, right? Right? You look at it, you see it, you react to it, you go back, and you go through iterations and you learn through the iterations. And that process is what makes you an intelligent user of technology. So it never, so that way you're not, I'll make a joke here, you're not gonna be a boomer, right? Like, you know, you, you can't figure out how to text to do something. You'll be like, okay, well, that's a new technology, but I know how things work. I can, you know, adapt to the new technology. So that's kinda the, my take on it, you know, be a knowledgeable user, but also can you then get into the next phase, which is being productive with it? You know, I'll give you a heads up, like TikTok, you know. You know, there's a bunch of stuff out there that's kinda like eye candy. I know some people do make a living off of it, I know. But for the most part, people are, are consumers of it without actually knowing how it works. So, you know, I can only speak to some of the things that I'm super knowledgeable about in terms of when I came into this district, uh, I think it was eight years ago. And then I can touch on some of the things that I'm knowledgeable about from, you know, knowing about what's going on in other places in the district. So, you know, we've had some growth in the last few years. You know, it goes back, I think a significant jump that we made was in two thousand seventeen, we had an assortment of classes throughout the, the district, throughout, especially through the, the high school. We had kinda things all over the place. Uh, but nothing cohesive in terms of an established computer science program. And at that time, uh, you know, Evan was instrumental and I remember calling Carol from Washington DC. I was on a trip with the patent office and I was like, we gotta, we gotta make this work. And I don't remember this. I was like, we gotta make this work. Uh, we had a librarian, Kirsten Fournier, who was interested in teaching computer science. Uh, and the district was able to help her transition from the library into that position. Uh, that was a huge jump for us and she really works hard at it. Uh, it's like her life passion at this point, in terms of, uh, you know, being an educator. And that afforded us the opportunity to start to think about scope and sequence and starting to put together something that made sense for kids to kinda step up, step in, and have multiple entry points with, um, you know, easy on-ramps for different types of kids and different venues that they could kinda spread into. You know, it didn't happen right away, but it was something that we worked at. You know, there's a number of computer science courses that are in place that I'll touch on in a minute, but, you know, we've been able to put that together. Below, at the, the middle school, you know, Pat teaches a lot of digital literacy and some other folks down there do that, which we'll touch on. And then, uh, you know, in our engineering courses down there, there's some practical coding and, and application with robotics. And then up at the high school, we get a little more deep into it through some electives that are offered. The, uh, the elementary, you know, I don't teach at elementary. I don't have an elementary voice. The kids in class know. Um, so it's embedded, uh, it's mainly through your, you know, your library. Your librarians are, are teaching these courses through digital citizenship, uh, computing systems, computational thinking. And those are the things that really get down to it. You know, your computational thinking, if you understand how uh, how computers work, how it's processed, if you start to understand like a binary number system, you understand the fundamentals of it, uh, you start to get that logic. So it's nice when the kids are introduced to this at an early age, because they start to figure out, is this something I'm interested in or not? The reality is, we all have different interests and uh, I'm a big believer in exposing kids to things, but it shouldn't be forced, right? I always tell that the kids in the high school robotics program that we have, I told you guys last week, it's a choice. If you love other things, you know, pursue those things. So, but I do think it's nice at the younger ages certainly to introduce kids to that. You know, they go through uh, kindergarten lessons with, uh, you know, computers are everywhere and kinda introducing to the concept of, you know, we're, I mean, it's like a look at the room, right? Everybody, there's computers everywhere. Uh, and then closing out with cloud computing, uh, by grade five. So the librarians do a nice job of walking the kids through that. The middle school, you've got your media arts, uh, so Colleen Janino could certainly speak, you know, more in-depth about this, but here I am doing my best impersonation of her. You know, through all sorts of digital applications that you can use to create artwork. So now you're taking, uh, you know, artwork and you're using tools and you're being creative and you're being productive with those tools. And it's interesting, as a side note, I remember a friend of mine named Rick is a DC comic artist. His big claim to fame is, in the nineteen eighties, he took and digitized for DC Comics the first time they ever did that. And uh, he turned that into his bread and butter. And the reason why he was able to do that is because he knew these, how computers worked and nobody else at the time, they thought it was all like voodoo. And he took that and converted it into actual application where now they digitize and they have a, a I think a library of all their work. So Colleen's people do a lot of great work with that at the middle school. Um, we have media literacy, you know, through Pat and others where, you know, you're starting to talk about, you know, what you create, are you a consumer? Uh, how do you consume? You know, are you utilizing credible resources when you're, you're doing your papers and other courses, things like that? And then there's the tech and engineering where you're applying some logic, you're applying things where you're trying to make things work and using that technology. And, you know, I think the biggest tie-in there is at the uh, grade seven and eight. Seven, they use uh, CAD software to create, you know, they're creating digital representations, so they go from paper to digital and then they're transitioning that into actual fabrication and manufacturing. And then you have robotics, which you've seen a demonstration of kids that take that on after school, but also in the eighth grade, the students are engaged in challenges where they're doing testbed programming, they're utilizing sensors, so they're doing input-output. You know, they're doing weight states, booleans, loops, and starting to get into actual concepts and structure for programming. So kinda interesting. Then we get into, you know, where I live, up at the high school. So up at the high school, this was a heavy lift that we got into, like I said, really in two thousand seventeen's when we really started digging in. And it was like, alright, we, what are we doing with this technology? We're gonna start creating and being productive with it, right? So these are the courses that are currently offered. You can see them on screen there. Uh, all the way up through, we finally get to the point where uh, we're plugging in and obviously some of these computer sciences more heavy than others. But also when we get to the top end of it, you're talking about, um, you know, what do we do if we have a junior that's, you know, basically maxed out on everything by the time they're a junior? So we opened up a capstone course and there's Tyler and Greg from this year. Goal for those students is to take and invent something to solve a problem, file a provisional patent for the US BTO. Uh, Tyler on the left invented this year a, a digital slash analog clock. It was a two-part system, marrying the two, and then having a digital screen that would pop up your next three items from a Google Calendar on screen. Greg, uh, worked on uh, product location in stores and helping people find products in stores and actually using your phone uh, through triangulation on a wifi to know where the user is in the store and actually have like an accurate map in the store of how to get to different products. Because usually when you're in a big box store, what happens? You lose your, you lose your cell service, you lose cell towers, and now you don't know where you are. Or maybe you do, I don't know. I'm not a good shopper. But the uh, so you know, you can see it goes through all these different things and also there's digital literacy throughout. But a little more on the, on the, you know, the, the productive side, making things, making products, developing systems. So there's all those different things that, you know, the kids do throughout all these different courses and we could get into that heavy, heavy conversation if you like sometime. Interesting. You know, this was interesting, right? So, you know, when it was kind of a smattering and, and things were in different places at that time, you know, the pass rate for the APCSA, that was, that's Java programming, typically done by seniors. It's a heavy lift. It's, it's considered the heaviest computer science lift of a high school student uh, when they're engaging in this work. And at that time, it was, you know, roughly forty percent passing rate um, at the high school, in Hopkinton High School, uh, which wasn't so hot. And, you know, the reason for that was you're, you're basically taking people, throwing them in the deep end without, you know, learning how to paddle a little bit. So that's where the scope and sequence work came along. What are we gonna do? What are we gonna plug in to get kids up to speed so that when they get to that point, they're prepared, they're ready, um, they have the ability to, to step up and actually engage in the work at a high level? Uh, so, you know, we put in an intro course. We put in a CSP course, which is like an intermediate course, uh, and then stepping up into that CSA course by junior, senior year. And then if a junior did that and wanted to move on, again, they could do the capstone. Well, the capstone's fed by engineering and uh, computer science students. If they've maxed out on everything at that point, they can kinda jump into that next level. So we were below the state average, you know, uh, this past spring, twenty twenty-two, we were up around eighty-nine percent, uh, which was, you know, a market improvement. Again, I give full credit to the, you know, the teacher. She puts a lot of time into it. She, you know, I've, I watch people prepare. I know how teachers work. I know how things go. She puts the time in, just like Pat did with this. You wanna know how many kids Pat had this year? She had a hundred and thirty-plus. That's a lot of people for one kid. So these are people that put a lot of time into this, a lot of effort. At the high school, you know, also through visual art, again, Colleen could speak way more in-depth than I could about this. But I see it. I see the work that they do. Everything from digital design where they're laser cutting products, um, designing on computer, you know, mapping out different things that they could, um, create with vectors so that they could cut them in vinyl cutters. Uh, I know Sterling does a lot of digital photography work, has an Adobe Cert course for Photoshop. You know, this, it could go on and on. There's a ton of this stuff throughout. You know, it, it's not like you're gonna go into one of these courses, you're gonna come out as you know, Steve Jobs, you know, ultimate computer programmer or something like that. But it's throughout. There's pieces throughout. So there's a bunch of different experiences that kids can engage in and be high-level computer users. Okay? So different applications. And then you get into the extracurriculars, so you have people that work very hard. Again, Pat, you know, is a picture from last year, but fantastic picture. You know, uh, leading a lot of students through extras. You know, kids that wanna engage in this at, you know, after school at a higher level, do they wanna do this, right? It's on their time, it's on the teacher's time, and they choose to do it. So, you know, up at the high school, you know, we've expanded the extracurriculars that include digital literacy- include digital literacy and computer programming and science throughout. We created a code club, so the students have an opportunity to meet up. We created a place where we had a lot of female students that want to create a space, a space that was more open for them and to give them an entry point. So we have girls who code. Those two groups actually work a lot together. But, you know, I've had girls tell me over the years, I wouldn't do the club without having that place where I could come in and get into it first. I've had people fight me on this like 10 different ways. I've had people yell at me because I'm isolating the girls and that's wrong. I've had people tell me that it's great. So all's I know is it works. And so if it works, we do it. The robotics, we have quite a few teams. We had nine teams at the high school. You get to high school, you'll find a lot of the kids have to make choices. You can't do it all. And the high school program's a little more time intensive, so the students have to make choices, but we also engage in that. BPA, we have a lot of students, I know Judy's niece is here tonight, the woman Judy that got me into BPA years ago, but everything from TV to, and digital media, to computer programming, computer network design. This year, we had some students win the national championship for that. Of, what else do we do? A whole bunch of computer-related events and they're all digital user experience for Adobe. And that, those students came in third this year at nationals. Science fair, Kristin Murphy kills it on that. I mean, this year, we've got a group at the high school, they're doing science fair invention club with it. They have a project that they just came back from science fair down in Dallas that came in third in the country. Actually, that's a global, they came in third in the world for science fair. And then the inventors' club, that group were also taken into MIT in a few weeks to do a presentation there from people all over the country. And we've got a whole bunch of stuff going on for kids. So there's opportunities all over the place if students would like to jump in and engage in it. So I mentioned some of these things here, you know, expansions and offerings, passing AP scores, extracurricular offerings, state and national titles throughout a whole bunch of different things that we do, right? And then including science fair that should be on there. And then, you know, one of the big things that was interesting was, you know, you know, a lot of talk about underrepresented groups in different school systems and everything. Our big group was the female students. That, when I started, it was 7%. So that was a big push and I'll give you a heads up, there's a big difference between, you know, projects where you go out in the field and blow something up. I've found that female students typically aren't drawn to that. So we kind of shifted away from those sort of things and shifted it into, can we be productive, make a difference? Can we plug in some empathy? And can we do projects and programs where kids want to do it? And they want to because they care about the product they make, they care about the product that they, you know, serve other people beneficiaries with. So it's practical application. So that's boosted us up to about 35%. At one point, we were 39%. It goes up and down a little bit. And some people told me like that's extremely high, but, you know, we, we're still pushing for 50% if we can get it. I'm not a satisfied person in case you can't tell. So we're working on it. But that's kind of, you know, you know, the, the overall of it all. And then I go back to Jeff, where it's the state level, okay? I live here in Hopkinton, this is where I do.
Well, and before I, before I do talk about some numbers beyond Hopkinton, I think one of the things to celebrate is, is this concept of growth and expansion. And I think Mr. Scott's epitomizing that and saying he's not satisfied with where we're at, even though we have much to celebrate, there's always room for us to grow, which is a great model for our students, it's a great model for our, our staff and our community to, to live through. One of the ways that we're expanding and, and growing is in our course offerings. We, we are, as we note from the budget season, we're adding a .4 FTE computer science teacher position. That's allowing us to add one intro to computer science class and one AP comp sci class. Those are both semester classes, so they're effectively four additional class opportunities for students in the next year ahead. I talked to Mr. Bishop, the principal over at the high school today, and he let me know that there are 24 seats in each of those classes and there are 24 seats subscribed to for each class each semester. So quick math there, 96 more opportunities for students to engage in in-person computer science learning in the, in just next year ahead. So in addition to everything that we've been doing, so much to celebrate. So what does it look like? When we talk about students taking part in computer science and not so much the, the classes that are digital literacy or might be, have a peripheral point of entrance into computer science, but truly comp sci. In the state, we know that the average is about 5.8% of students on a given year are going to enroll in a high school computer science class. In Hopkinton, it's over 13% of students take part in a computer science class. And we're confident that as we continue to grow and expand our offerings and opportunities, that number is only going to increase in the, in the, the chance for students to learn even more in a field that might lead them down a path to a passion and a calling is really exciting for us to be able to, to offer. So as we look ahead, we have a lot to think about. I mentioned the expansion of the in-person course opportunity. We're going to be talking about how we can identify the chance for cohesion and coherence across our K-12 curriculum program. In addition to reviewing our elementary science and technology and engineering program, we're going to look for cross, opportunities for cross-curricular integration, we're going to be looking at course requirements, and we're going to continue to study that, that ongoing worry and concern we have around screen time and social media and how we can help our students and their families by association become practical, safe, healthy users and consumers of, of those products. So as we do, to, on behalf of the district, thank Doug Scott for his exceptional leadership in this department. He's an incredibly humble guy and will accept the praise for how much work he does, but everyone around him and everyone sitting over here knows how hard he works. And he's supported and followed behind by a host of amazing educators. Ms. Allen's here tonight, just representing one of the many. And then when we think beyond even our technology and our computer science courses, those librarians that talk about digital literacy with five-year-olds, those fourth-grade classroom teachers that are finding a way to infuse robotics into mathematics, all these opportunities to create exposure and create excitement so that our students can decide, this might be something that I want to spend the rest of my life doing. And they got that opportunity in the halls of, of the Hopkinton Public Schools. So that's something we're very proud of. So with that, Mr. Scott and I are both available for any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much.
Questions from the committee?
I know somewhere Leah's smiling.
Yes, she is.
Yeah, that's right.
This is incredible. I'm grateful. I, I worked in applied science for 10 years and the stuff that I saw at the science fair and what you're showing up here is, I didn't get in my undergrad work. So it's kind of incredible to see how our kids are entering like the world once they leave our building. Like it's a, the ground floor is so much higher than our ceiling was 20 years ago, right?
Yeah, every adult that comes in will always say, wow, we didn't have this when I was in school.
Yeah.
Me neither.
Mr. Bishop, yeah, Mr. Bishop and I were joking, we're like, we learned the mitochondria is a powerhouse of the cell. And good luck, good luck, congrats.
That's right, you've kind of moved on.
Yeah.
Very different.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Yeah, I think I referred to you and your colleagues as our sort of STEM Justice League of like superheroes because we are so fortunate. And my oldest son graduated in 2017, just as you were arriving to bring shape and intention to the work that we're doing. So I, you know, this is amazing. We see where it's come from his graduation point to now is like truly remarkable and really a credit to you, your vision and your, your ability to, you know, just get it done somehow. I don't know how you get it done, I really don't. And all of you.
Team effort, there's a lot of people involved. I mean, at the building administrators, we have a fantastic, district administrators are very supportive. And again, the teachers are the ones that, you know, they get it done every day. So it's, and the kids are good, sometimes. So they, they, no, I mean, you know, if, if everybody's on board and willing to put in a good effort, kids included, you know, you can do some good things. So, and I mean, you guys are supportive too. I mean, we send you crazy requests for like, hey, we're going to take 25 kids to California. And you guys are like, ah, all right, go for it. So, I mean, all these opportunities don't just happen, you have to be in a place where people are supportive of it. So it's, it's a team effort for sure.
I'll just add one more word of support for future visioning for where we're going. I mean, I, 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 the worry that I have is that we are still graduating kids through high school that have never had a computer science class in high school. We have a lot, these are amazing courses, they're predominantly electives or, you know, you choose this or a different, is it math? Are these in the math department when we, is it math credit or science credit when you take?
They were originally in the math, yeah. It was, it was, CSA was offered in the, in the math department, yeah.
So my, my hope, my, you know, vision, and I'll speak on behalf of Leah, just, you know, and I know there's embedded in many of these courses is work on data. A lot of stuff that you didn't, you know, getting into the depths of the curriculum, but my hope is that we can see a time when no child will graduate without having a computer science course that establishes the fundamentals. And I know that my kids have had to backfill in college because they couldn't fit in with their other APs and whatever, you know, it just didn't fit. And I think, you know, I think of this discipline, it's so essential to everything that we have going forward in the world that we can't predict. And we need to know how, like as you said, if you kind of get how it works, you'll figure it out. You can, you know, but we, I don't want to see us graduating kids that haven't had this. And I, I worry when it's a choice because not all kids know they want to make that choice. So kind of like we teach biology, we teach physics, we teach chemistry, this is another way of decoding the world around us so that kids can like really get at it. And then they can choose when they get to college, if this is their thing, we will have given them the tool. So I love, I'm like thrilled with where we are, I think it's amazing, I still have the vision. And I know that Mass has this curriculum, but it's not, it's not really quite required, right? They've developed the thinking on it as have a lot of other institutions, but they haven't quite gone, taken that step of this is essential learning and it is essential learning. And the kids that are doing this that are choosing, amazing, like all these kids that come forward. So I just hope that we have every graduate have this exposure.
There's a, there's a, well, there's two things on that. One, that, you know, that, don't give, don't give the state too much credit because they don't have a curriculum, but they do have some frameworks, some things they want us to work toward. How we get there is, is often locally developed and homegrown. You know, Mass, there was a, a study that came out last year by code.org, and they, they've done a lot of work on really advocating for computer science education. And they went through every state, and I believe there were eight metrics of success for, for programming development. Massachusetts scored very high and checked every box except for one, which was, do you require the course to be completed? That was the only one. I don't think there were, I don't think there were really many, if any, states that did. But the fact that we're up, hit all those other boxes is a really good thing. And I'm sure as we continue to look towards the future, we'll have some additional conversation on that.
I think so.
So we would be gra, I mean, I recognize fully that we would be groundbreaking to require it. It's not something that is done. I can always hope with a vision, you know? Even look, I think I shared with you a Brookings Institute study, they had a map of the world and where in the world is this required and where isn't it? The US did not have anything that was marked as required learning. This is not a country that has made this part of the fabric. But because of you guys, I mean, it is finding its way into, you know, we have hundreds of kids who are taking these classes, which is phenomenal. I mean, to be at, what, like triple or whatever the, the double, what the state, I mean, it's just amazing. So I think we're, we're way above where, where any other school is, but, you know, don't like to rest on our laurels, let's like, you know, keep fishing.
But also to consider, there's the student who chooses not higher education, but vocational. And the, the use of computer and computer science is becoming much more critical in those fields. You know, the steamfitter no longer just goes out, uses his wrench, he's, he's involved in computations and utilizing computers. So it is important to get it in, probably starting seriously towards the junior high level.
That's a good point.
You're right.
Judy, we have nothing left.
Judy knows. Yeah, the, yeah, I mean, just from my own standpoint, you're right. Because I, you know, this past year, one of the things we plugged in was a, a survey of a vocational course. And you're right, we use computers for everything from researching bicycle parts to CAD designs for cutting gaskets on small engines when we, you know, break one. Or, you know, templates for stencils, you know, whatever we need.
Even just a simple level.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We use, we use technology for all sorts of stuff. And, and it's interesting because it's an application where those students want to engage with computers like that, in that way. I have a kid right now that, you know, his fun is he, he rebuilt a 68 Chevy pickup. And, you know, he wants to engage in the technology that he can use to do that sort of work. So, yeah, there's different applications for sure.
Thank you for all of, all of the work that you've done and do with our students and for all of the things that I know go outside of kind of going to California with kids and Texas and everything.
No, it's not in the job description.
No, but it's also many more hours than, you know, would be in a typical workday and much appreciated.
That wasn't your job, you weren't in your job description to go to Texas, was it? Nope.
But, but all that you inspire in our students, in our staff, much appreciated, both of you. And thank you so much for coming and giving us time tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Scott, and thank you, Mrs. Allen. Thank you. All right, kids, you can go home and get your homework done.
Sorry? Does everyone only have 10 days?
No, the, there are, June 21st is the last day for everybody. The seniors graduate a week from tomorrow. All right.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
That moves us then into the superintendent's report. Dr. Kavanaugh, if you have that.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Congratulations again.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
It was our pleasure. Again, a hard act to follow.
I know.
Feeling kind of yawn and ho-hum here. Okay, so, thank you. This is the superintendent's report from May 25th, 2023. We'll start off with some celebrations, kids and their teachers. Just to have a little discussion about what's coming up for the class of 2023 as we approach graduation. Next week, May 30th, they're off to a Red Sox game. The 31st, they have the senior boat cruise. On the 1st, senior recognition night. June 2nd, Friday night, outside on the football field, we will have graduation. And on June 3rd, the senior car parade, so. Just some more student and teacher successes. In the same way that our robotics kids have just come back from Dallas, SO2 have some science fair students at the high school. Riley Blair, Deisha Muddner, and Dylan Streak, they placed third in the earth and environmental science competition, and that is worlds. So on the international level, their project was titled Electrolytic Extraction of Dawsonite from Ocean Water: Efficient Saltwater Mineral Recovery Through Electrolysis. And they have won numerous awards this spring. The exciting thing, we probably should have mentioned this while Mr. Scott was still here, that they are now building the prototype of their invention and he has taken over where Mrs. Murphy has, has left off. So that's pretty amazing. We have seven Hopkinton High School teams that competed at the state fair at MIT, that was in early May. And so that third place team of Riley, Deisha, and Dylan, they did win first place prize at MIT, as well as the La as well as the Lamarsh Special Award for Excellence in Design. We had a junior, Shrillakshmi Venkatasin, and she won third place for her project. Here we go. Utilizing hypermagnosemia to understand the impact of neuromuscular blocking agents on chondrohabditis elegans. There we go. Don't ask me anything about that. We had a first-year participant, Juliette Finland, who won honorable mention for Correla Vulgaris as a model for photobioreactor use in industrial carbon removal. And the team of Nikali Vela Garcia, Surya Rajah Ahmadhan, and Nithu Shridharan, who won a special Trailblazer Award for Innovation in Life Sciences. So all of that amazing success with the kids, and here they are in a picture, phenomenal scientists. And then finally, congratulations goes to Kristen Murphy, who has been the science fair advisor for a number of years now. She was very honored to receive the Sanofi Specialty Care Massachusetts Science Teacher of the Year Award, which is pretty amazing. What they had to say about her, in reviewing Kristen's nominations, the committee noted that Kristen's joy in teaching shines through her dedication to her students, attention to their needs, and her pride in their accomplishments. And Kristen herself said, "It was so special to receive this award and read the kind words that students and families wrote in their nominations." As part of the prize, the high school will receive two thousand dollars to help us to continue to build our program and support student research. So pretty fabulous in the science fair. And I know that we keep giving you this information almost incrementally, but wherever they go, they seem to do very well. We did also have a student in the district who won the President's Environmental Youth Award. It is a fourth grade student whose name is Anya Sony. She is at the Hopkins School, and she always hopes to spot one of her favorite animals, the turtle. Unfortunately, one too many times, she's seen them fall prey to motor vehicles, particularly when they cross roadways. So despite the discouragement of these sites, Anya was determined to put a stop to turtle endangerment, so she began her very own wildlife conservation project. And so, again, that's on a national level.
Fourth grade?
Fourth grade. Also very exciting, our unified track and field team, we're the Division Two state champs. And that was just yesterday in Natick, that they, they won that, and they have been state champs now two years in a row. Super amazing. Just remembering and celebrating Rick Hoyt. This is both, I think, a sort of happy and sad moment. On the eighteenth of May, Thursday, we were very lucky that Rick and Russ Hoyt had made a visit to the Marathon Elementary School. In two different programs, they got to visit with the kindergarten students and the first grade students. And I think sort of the premise of the presentation was that, you know, even with a disability, there are so many abilities that you have, so many things that you can conquer. And the kids were, you know, so engaged and interactive. And then we were so saddened to learn that Rick Hoyt passed away that following Monday on the twenty-second. But what an amazing contribution his life has made to, you know, athletics and just, I think, motivating people all over the world. So very sad loss for us in Hopkinton. Just very quickly, I know that people in town have been wondering about the Athena report. It was finally issued to the district on May ninth. And this was a report that was really a program analysis that was done at the middle school. On the left-hand side of the screen, and I'm not sure you can quite see it from where you're sitting, but it's a pretty complex document. One of the things, well, the five things that they were really looking for for us, this is what we had asked Athena to look for, was the program model, and then really think about some of our priority focuses in our curricula. To take a look at the middle school schedule, to take a look at middle school staffing and space, to think about our IEP development, and we all know that the IEP is changing within the next year. And then finally, what professional development opportunities might we have to bolster that, bolster that kind of instruction? So the plan for this report now is to really hand it over to our newly hired Director of Student Services, which you will be talking about this evening. And, um, you know, I think that we are in a, in a very good place in terms of special education analysis. We did a, like, three-year-long analysis K to five, and really thought hard about what placement should look like, specially designed instructions. So it's kind of exciting now that we're moving the, the work to the middle school. And then the final thing, I'd want to talk a little bit about the Elmwood Project tonight, the ESBC two met on Tuesday night. And Mrs. Rothman, you can jump right in at any time on these slides because you have been an integral part of that group as well. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the enrollment for grades two, three, and four. Because I think that, you know, some people are wondering, is the enrollment going to actually play out so that you would have need for an eleven-hundred-and-seventy-five student school? Currently, so just this very day today, we were able to count up all of these students in grades two, three, and four, and the count is now at nine-hundred-and-seventy-six. So you can see that we are at about a difference of one-hundred-and-ninety-nine students, so just below two-hundred students. And there are, you know, four years to see if that's going to play out. So we tried to do a little bit of math on that to answer the question, will we gain an additional one-hundred-and-ninety-nine students to fulfill that projection by twenty-twenty-seven? So what we did was we took the enrollment for today on May twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three, and today's enrollment is four-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen students. Last June, when they did the SIMS report on the first of June, we were at four-thousand-sixty-nine. So there's a difference, essentially an increase of one-hundred-and-forty-seven students, and that doesn't count the integrated preschool. So that's only K to twelve. So if we take a look at grades two to four, of those one-hundred-and-forty-seven students, the, the increase in grades two to four was thirty stu, thirty-two students. So if we just did some very simple math and said we had four years to get there, and we took thirty-two students, and we multiplied it by four years, we would be at one-hundred-and-twenty-eight kids. So that's not too far off from the one-hundred-and-ninety-nine that we're, that we're thinking about. So I think that the, and all of this is really based on the demographic studies done by the MSBA. And I think last time we talked, we said it was kind of an exciting week because the MSBA had said, "This is the time when we are going to confirm that what we believe is going to be your projected enrollment will be your projected enrollment." So that's where we are, and I think our math looks pretty good next to their math. So the other thing people are saying is, "Oh, my gosh, you've got this gigantic school. Do you really need something that large?" And so what we did was we took the eleven-hundred-and-seventy-five students, and we said, "If the projected class size was twenty-two students per classroom, what we would need is fifty-four classrooms." We would also need classrooms for special education and ESOL, and we would also need classrooms for related services. And so if you take a look at the drawings that Perkins Eastman have done for us, and those are three different floors, so you can see the first floor, the second floor plan, and the third floor plan, none of those things has anything extraneous in it. So when we talk about fifty-four classrooms and the need for spaces to do small group reading, for example, or ESOL pullout, all of those things are accounted for there, but all of these are just standard asks in public education. There's nothing that kind of goes next level. There's no family resource center, for example. And I think it's important to mention that because we had a family resource center in there, and when we thought, okay, it's over seven-hundred dollars a square foot, how big is that family resource center? Do we really need it? That could be taken out of, of this. Another thing that happened, which is, it's kind of an interesting thing to look at, but if you look at the, the drawing that shows you the first floor, in this area right here, there used to be a jut out. And one of the things that happens is when you make more walls and more corners, it costs you more money. So if we can take that wall and straighten it out and just flatten that corner, we're actually saving money. I would love for people to watch the ESBC two meetings, because when you do that, you actually get to see all of the places where we're taking things down by twenty thousand, a hundred thousand, a half million. We realized that eliminating a family resource center was almost a million dollars in savings. We also wanted to do a little bit of a comparison, because one thing that surfaced for us the other night at ESBC two is we went, we had agreed with the MSBA that we would do a post-occupancy study with them for Marathon. You know, they sometimes like to come in and take a look and say, you know, what we chose, did it work or didn't it work? And what could we have done better? Or what was, you know, an absolute shining star for you? So we went back and we looked, and we realized that when we were building Marathon, it was built for three-hundred-and-ninety-five students, and today there are just about seven-hundred kids in that building. So it was built for three-ninety-five, and the cost was forty-three million. And what we're currently doing is building a school for eleven-hundred-and-seventy-five students, and we do not know what the cost of that is. So if people are putting out numbers, we really don't have any hard and fast numbers at this time. But if we took the forty-three-million-dollar figure and we multiplied it by three, because if we took the roughly four-hundred kids and multiplied that by three, we'd get roughly twelve-hundred kids. The, the dollar amount is one-hundred-and-twenty-nine million. We started the Marathon project ten years ago. So if you think about, or it will be ten years by the time we get to the end of this. So if you think about ten years of escalation and three times the students, while the price tag in the community might feel really high, it's not necessarily that high when you consider that you're building it for three times the number of students. So why are we saying that our costs are not yet determined? Here's a really good example. And this slide came to us right from Perkins Eastman. So you can see how huge that school is. It's absolutely enormous, which means the exterior is absolutely enormous. You have to make choices in terms of the products and the materials and, and the designs you're going to put inside a building. So if you take a look at stone, if we were to choose a stone exterior, or even portions of the exterior being stone, stone is about eighty to a hundred dollars a square foot. And the average life for that stone is about forty-five to seventy-five years. But if we go over here and we choose something called CMU, and that's what you see on the outside of the Marathon School, the price for that is thirty to forty-five dollars a square foot. So it's somewhere around half to a third of the cost when you choose the CMU. And it lasts fifty to, I don't know why they say seventy-four years, so it seems to me seventy-five would be reasonable, but, but that's what they tell us. So you can see that when we make these choices, the difference in the exterior cost will literally be millions of dollars. So it's really hard for us right now to say, "We know the cost of that school." We don't, because there needed to be, there needs to be many, many choices made.
So Dr. Kavanaugh, when you say, just going back, that this school is like enormous. I mean, it's, it's bigger than a two-grade school, but it is smaller than, say, the high school, four-grade school. I mean, it's tall, but the foot, it's a different shape.
It's a different shape.
But I think, you know, enormous sounds like unusual. Like, I think it's, it's a three-grade school, right? So it's just that it's tall in.
And that also saves you money.
Right.
Building up rather than building out.
But I think people feel like we're building something like this crazy monster of a school, but we have three and four-grade schools in our district already, that, like, the middle school. I mean, this is a bigger-than-Elmwood school because it is three grades. And I just wanna be clear that it's, I mean, it is, again, a different shape because we decided to go three floors.
I have to wash your mouth, cut my ears. From being creepy, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, no, so I think, you know, I think it's just, it, it is the size appropriate for three grades.
It is.
It's just a different shape than we're accustomed to, so it seems bigger and taller than usual.
One thing, too, in terms of the educational plan, is that in each of these wings, there are three floors. And so if you come into this new school as a second grader, and say, for example, you're housed in, in this wing, you'll live in that wing for the three years that you are in that school. You know, so if this is a second-grade wing, when you enter, the next year it will become a third-grade wing, and then the next year it will become a fourth-grade wing. So you live in that same wing all the time, and you'll have your own assistant principal who loops with you. And you'll have your own counselor who loops with you. So the nice neighborhood feel, and one thing, too, that, um, I'm not sure that you can see in here, but in the center of these, there are breakout spaces where, you know, kids will actually come out into hallways in small groups, and they can come from multiple classrooms for small group instruction. So you really are living in a community in that school. It's designed specifically to do that. So when we say it's enormous, it, it, it's a big school, but it's got, we believe it's gonna have a cozy feel. One other thing that I'm sorry I didn't put into this is that now that they're starting to do some sort of illustrations of the outside of the building, they are doing kind of red front. And then as you look at the wings that are set further back, they're, you know, colored a lighter blicks, brick so that they don't feel like it's big back there, that the front feels kind of small and cozy. And then when you go in, so you don't really see those back wings quite as much visually.
You're trying to Disney them, like how Disney, you're trying to pretend everything's, yeah.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Our newest verb, Disney.
Yeah.
Trick everybody.
So, I have, I have a question. So there's a lot of numbers that I see in places. None of those numbers reflect any sort of reality because we don't have those final numbers correct. Like, we're still working to get closer to a real number that represents the actual cost to the community. On this slide right here, overnight, the number one-hundred-and-seventy million, which is the number that is out there now, is really the maximum cost for that building. If you picked, huh, at all of those things, one-hundred-and-seventy million. Yeah. The other, so what, if you watch the ESBC two meetings, you can see the places like cutting that, literally cutting that corner.
Yeah.
It's gonna save you money, or eliminating a family resource center, or choosing CMU over stone. That's the process that we're in right now, taking that cost down. And then the other thing is that you're gonna get reimbursement on that one-hundred and whatever it is million that it comes out to be. So MSBA would say it's forty percent, but we know that it ends up getting closer to twenty-five because some of the things that, that will be choices just won't be reimbursable by the MSBA.
So would you recommend that community members that wanna know the accurate information on this project, would it be, the best place be the Elmwood School website? Would it be a presentation that we have? Where would they, where would a community member get the most accurate information?
Yes, so the, that website is terrific.
Yeah.
Our ESBC two meetings are televised every other week. And then on Wednesday, June seventh, there is a public forum. And that is virtual. So you can stay home and be on your couch and comfortable and still get all of this information.
Thank you.
And what time is, do you know what time that's going to be? Has that been determined yet? I'm trying to think.
I bet it's on the Elmwood School website.
We will get that information to you in only moments.
Is there going to be a faculty forum as well, or is this a combined community faculty?
Community faculty, combined, yeah. I think that we've done a lot of work with the faculty, not just forums, but now we've had the designers go to both Hopkins and Elmwood and meet with various teacher groups. Because, you know, when we say to a special educator, "What do you feel like you would need in your classroom? How many square feet do you want? Would you like permanent walls? Would you like removable walls? Would you like no walls?" You know, that kind of work has been done.
That's great.
Thank you.
The virtual option, I'm sure, allows more flexibility for people to be at home.
Alright, and while we wait.
Six-thirty is the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And just a very happy Memorial Day weekend to everyone, as we anticipate graduation next week.
It's a big week for the graduates.
It sure is.
Any questions for Dr. Kavanaugh's report?
Thank you.
Lots of information in there.
It's the season, yeah.
Alright then. If there are no questions, I will move into the school committee chair report and start out by saying that operating warrants twenty-three dash zero-five-nine, twenty-three dash zero-six-zero, and twenty-three dash zero-six-one have been approved. A copy of the warrants that was included in your packet. And then just to circle back to our, our last meeting, the executive session minutes were reviewed on April twenty-seven, twenty-three, and the following were approved but not released because the purpose of the executive session still exists, and that would be November eighth, twenty-twenty-one, and March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And then there was a batch that was approved, as we had amended them in the meeting, but not released. And that was March thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three, and April thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And then approved as amended, amended and released with some redactions. And the parts that are redacted again are because the purpose that that part of the conversation covered is still covered under the executive session, not the reason why it was called, and that was January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And then that brings us into the school committee chair report, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three year in review. I did send that to people in advance because sometimes it's easier. I don't know what it's gonna look like up on the screen till I see it.
That's great.
Thank you. Okay, so just, this is just thoughts that I put together and kind of looking at where we came from this year, and kind of looking ahead then at the end to where we'd like to be next year. Certainly open for everybody's input as we move forward. So if you could just move, sorry, thank you. So looking just at our meetings, we held thirty-two regular meetings, including regular meetings, joint meetings with other boards and committees, public hearings and forums, special meetings, working sessions, and meetings with executive sessions. I think. I think of note, we did talk about this a little bit in the budget, actually, a fair amount in the budget, is that our district was ranked number two by niche in spite of being ranked two-hundred-and-eighty-ninth in the Commonwealth for School Spending. So again, I, we had talked about this for folks at home just in the context of we're really getting a lot of bang for our buck in not using money in frivolous ways, certainly. We expanded our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old program to allow non-residents to pay tuition to attend Hopkinton's program. And that, to me, is, you know, last year, at the end of the year, we're talking about how the the niche hop shop had opened for our eighteen-to-twenty-two-year-old. And that's, that's a store that they run out of the White House that's in front of the middle school. And that has been really exciting to watch and to see the kids pop up in different spots with their pop-up stores outside CVS and and whatnot. We held some virtual office hours around the budget and grade configuration. We've participated in the hiring process for the assistant superintendent, the Elmwood principal, the Hopkins principal, and now, most recently, the director of student services, which we will be discussing, making a decision about later tonight. We accepted thousands, and it was several thousands of dollars worth of donations of things such as musical instruments, photography equipment, athletic equipment, monetary support, and more. We ratified the HTA Unit C contract, and that that contract was actually negotiated in the previous year, but it was ratified under the twenty-two, twenty-three school committee, as well as approving MOA agreements with the nurses, and we approved the school physician contract. We also began some exciting work, and I think really hopeful work, with a facilitator to begin the process to reset our work with CPAC. And we have moved forward with a policy and some procedures that we were waiting to move forward till we had our new committee members and also our new director of student services. And then we did goal-setting work for the first time that I can recall when we were on the committee. I think in looking back through records, it, there were school committee goals actually more than ten years ago, which is before anyone's tenure here. But I'm hoping that we will continue with that this summer and do that, kind of reset our goals and what what it is that we're looking to do to align our our policies and our budget priorities with the work that we've identified. So and then, you know, obviously, there are a lot of things that we did that don't fit neatly on a slide. A lot of, some, some things bigger, some things smaller, some things happier, some things a little more challenging. But we, we really, I feel like, kept the focus on meeting the needs of our students and our families, both right now, but also in the years to come. And that, I think, is for me really one of the hallmark pieces and part of why I really enjoy our student council rep. I know that we, we miss Robert, but we do, I know, have another one who will be coming in for next year. So I pulled just the district profile, looking at five years in comparison because I think it's important to, both to celebrate the fact that our diversity has increased, but also to look at the ways in which the, what we were doing in two thousand and eighteen, we had three thousand five hundred and eighteen students compared to now, five years later. We have four thousand two hundred and sixteen students. And that's, it, it's a different district in a lot of ways than it was five years ago. In many ways, they're exciting, but in ways that require some careful planning for in terms of looking where we're going ahead. And I don't want to read all the the different percentages, but I did want people to have that ability to look at. One of the statistics that jumped out to me in a big way was the high-needs percentage that in twenty-eighteen, we had nineteen point one percent of our students identified as high-needs, and we now have twenty-nine point four percent. And that's certainly, we want to make sure that that's something that we're budgeting well for and in looking to make sure that we continue to meet their needs. So and then more just about our students. We talk about percentages of students with disabilities, but the number of students on IEPs is six hundred and forty-one. And the number of students on five oh four plans, which is also students with identified disabilities, is two hundred and nineteen. So that's a pretty good, significant portion of our student body. Also, you know, speaks really to the importance of our director of student services in the decision that we're making tonight. The number of the English-language learner students, two hundred and fifty-eight. And then the former English-language students is three hundred and forty-eight, our fellows. It, it, that says, I think, really both to the strength of our program, but also really just how we're a diversifying community and to celebrate all that that brings for all of our students and, again, wanting to make sure we meet the needs. I pulled the AP tests because I think that is an interesting statistic just in terms of how Hopkinton is doing, it's just at our high school. The number of AP tests that were taken, and this is for last May because we don't have the statistics that are out yet for this May, is eleven hundred thirty-three, which, as I noted, is the seventh-highest number in the state. And the districts that had more than we were, were significantly bigger in most cases. Arlington, Belmont, Boston, Lexington, Newton, and Worcester. So some of those districts are significantly bigger. And you'll note that the districts that we typically put up that are kind of comparable, both in size and that we compare ourselves for a number of just different reasons, don't make the cut by a significant amount to the number that we have. And so I think that's a real, a benefit that we're able to offer that to our students and something that I think, you know, it, we pride ourselves on being able to to offer as many courses and different levels of courses that we do. All right, so policy work. I won't read all of the policies. I know there is one policy in process related to the staff that I did not list. I didn't have those letters.
GBEV.
GB, okay. You'd think that would, so I will, just before I kind of put this aside for people to be able to access in in the coming year, make sure I add that in there. But policy work, and I, I know that the policy-working group that you and Jen really did a heavy lift of doing research on things and meeting frequently at very early hours before work and and whatnot. And it is one of the biggest things that we do as a committee, that the policy, obviously, the budget are the two, and of course, hiring the superintendent. But they're big in terms of what our our legal responsibilities are. And some of those are brand-new policies. The equity policy that we did, the JBB Educational Equity is a policy that we worked on for over a year and through many iterations, but it was a brand-new policy to Hopkinton. And I appreciate, again, the work that you guys do or have done.
Lee brought that one forward.
That, yes, but just on all of them, the the amount of research that you look at different, what different districts are doing, what MASC is doing, and it really adds a lot of depth to what we're able to do. So that's our policy work. And then just the addressing enrollment growth in the building constraints is a big one. We know just from looking at our projections that this is going to be an ongoing thing as a school committee that we continue to look at for probably ten years till we've reached kind of what we hope will be how high we're, how high for the big balloon. But the marathon addition currently underway, I did take that photo yesterday, so that is about as current as we have in that. And it, I didn't get the zoomed-out picture on it, but it really, it matches very nicely with the existing building. It does not appear, I think, when it's completed, you won't drive up and think, ooh, that's a a piece that didn't fit in the beginning. It looks very much like the building. As well as the design and feasibility study for the addition to the Hopkins School that was approved at annual town meeting. And that's obviously a a big piece in looking at where the crunch in enrollment is going to be there as well as updating the facility. And then the key decisions on the Elmwood School project. The ESBC has, you know, worked very hard. That's a heavy lift as well. The approval of the education plan, which now feels like it was years ago, but I think it was in January.
Yeah, wasn't that long ago?
Yeah.
It does feel like a long time.
Ah, the approval of the grade configuration, going with the second to the fourth grade. And for those at home that that may remember, the reason we did that was to maximize the amount of MSBA reimbursement that we would be able to get and alleviate the upstream, some of the, what we'll see at the middle school and the high school overcrowding in years to come. By pulling a grade out of the middle school and putting it down to Hopkins and a grade then down into the new Elmwood building will really, really save us from some pretty big crunches that are going to happen in the not-so-distant future. So also, as we think it was the last meeting or two meetings ago, we discussed that we had been moved from feasibility phase into schematic design, and our design enrollment was certified. Also, interesting that the the MSBA really agreed with the work of the demographers.
Yes.
So thoughts to come, these were just a couple of higher-level things. But, you know, I know we did talk about at one point mid-year, and it's come up in other years as well, the thought of doing a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of the district in the school committee to really to help us understand different stakeholder opinions, different concerns, things that might not bubble up just on their own and that we might not be able to see. And I think that could help us just to to identify not, not only areas that we need to improve, but strengths that people see. Because if we know where our strengths are, we know better where we need to put different amounts of work. And, you know, other potential areas of focus and improvement for us as, you know, as a district and as a committee. Continue the work with CPAC, obviously, is a big piece. And then, you know, continue the discussions on how the school committee can support the district's work on bullying and bias-related incidents. You know, obviously, I know there are some pieces that belong to the schools that only the school can do just legally, but there are ways that we can support that work. I know you had brought that up a little bit ago, and that's, you know, I think, important for us to know how we fit into being able to do that. I think increasing the community awareness and the engagement around the Elmwood School project well ahead of the fall special town meeting. I feel like we're now kind of entering into a new crucial phase of really wanting to make sure that people understand the need for the project, the needs that our enrollment has, and kind of what this will mean for the district if we move, are able to move forward with it versus the consequences of not moving forward. And then also really understanding the numbers. I've seen the past couple of days, some numbers thrown out that I know are not in line with what's actually come out of the elementary school building committee meeting, so. And then do goal and norm setting for the school committee over the the summer. And just for for folks who may not remember from last summer, we, every year, we do look at our norms of what we agree on, how we're going to do the work. And we, we look at the document intentionally, and we go through it, and we think, okay, this, this is how we want to be as a a committee and how we want to communicate and how we want to make things work in a way to move the work forward. So we will come back to that now that we have our new, both Susan and Adam, who was not able to be here. Exciting to have, you know, a new, a fresh start. So and then the the equity audit to help inform, you know, policy and budget decisions going forward. So I am excited when that will come out. So that's.
Great.
That's, you know, what what I had for a short little bullet for the past year.
That's great. You did an excellent job.
Thank you.
It's helpful to take, you have to take this time to actually look at what we've done because we're so busy doing it, we don't realize that we've done anything. So it is nice to remember that we've accomplished some things and we have work to do, so.
I actually remember having, like, seventy-two budget meetings. And you wrote, you didn't write that number.
It, it, it did feel like seventy-two is probably the low end of how many happened.
That's how it felt internally, but I appreciate that you had an accurate number then.
I went through and counted.
Yeah.
But, you know, and I, I think in terms of budget meetings, you know, that that creeps up on us pretty quickly. We, we start really in September with a a meeting with the select board and them setting what the budget message is going to be, and then go with our zero-based budget. And the district administrators do, you know, their magic of trying to start with zero and and bring it to us, and lots of discussion ahead. So we have a reprieve of between, was it May twelfth that we voted the budget? Or maybe it was the.
There was the fourth or fifth iteration.
Yeah, so between then and September when we come back, so lots, lots to come on that.
Thank you for doing all that work.
Thank you. All right. That brings us into liaison reports. I don't know if people have.
But thank you.
It's very good. I will say that there is an LPAC meeting next week that is, they're going to do a Zoom meeting. And I, I have really enjoyed my work with LPAC. It has been not, not a whole lot. It's not been like what the policy group has been. But I, I enjoy that group tremendously, so I'm looking forward to that. And that then brings us into something I think probably a lot of folks at home are interested in this, the next piece. It's the director of student services discussion. And then we will vote to authorize the superintendent in the end to enter into negotiations. So would you like to?
Surely, yes. I want to begin with, yesterday at one of the forums, someone had asked how many candidates had actually submitted resumes for the position. So I thought it was important to give that information for you. We actually had twelve applicants. And there were some people in there who really weren't qualified for the position. So then there were eight applicants who were fairly viable. And then we moved forward five. And then we had five go to two. So we are down to two candidates right now. And those two people are Jennifer Toth, who is currently a student services director in the town of Harvard, Massachusetts. And the other is Abigail Hanscom, who's a director of student services in Westwood, Massachusetts. So we're really fortunate to have two people who are currently sitting in the position. Adam did send his rating sheets. So I want to give these to you here because we want to make sure that we do that in an open session. So the first one is for Jennifer Toth, and then the second one here is for Abigail Hanscom, so that you each have a copy of those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so I think that we'll get to a finalist tonight and then hope to be able to engage in successful negotiations with that person.
Great. So I do just want to acknowledge that Holly and I were on the subcommittee as authorized by the school committee and did have the round of interviews with the larger group.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate, I, we got a fair amount of feedback. I appreciated people that were able to take the time to make sure that we got that, both from staff and from community members.
Yeah, excellent. I got to sit in all the forums yesterday and listen to, like, really excellent questions. Tons of people came and were involved over the course of the day. It was excellent.
I also want to give a special shout-out to HCAM. I know that they were working quite late last night to make sure that the the video for both of the finalists from the community forum got out so that people could see it and, in some cases, then provide feedback for us. But I, I think that this, that piece is really crucial. HCAM is there for us on many, many occasions that allows folks to access the work that we're doing and the process that we're going.
Can be more inclusive for who can participate in the process.
Absolutely. So in terms of a process here, I think if we want to talk a little bit about, just about the the two candidates in terms of things that people's, thoughts on that, the feedback that we have just as a committee.
I thought we were incredibly lucky to have both of them, like, to have two excellent, strong candidates to choose from. I was grateful for that piece.
I agree. I thought they were both very strong candidates. We were, we were very fortunate to be able to bring two strong finalists forward, to be able to have them engage with the community and to to provide their thoughts on the vision for the future.
Yeah.
In terms of, do we want to talk about the the feedback that we received from the community first?
Sure.
So the the community feedback, it, one thing that jumped out at me as I read through that, people were liked very much that Abigail had experience with special education directly. They, you know, they had a lot of positive things to speak about, both of them. Both of them obviously have comparable positions, but in different sizes, districts. And that was something that had jumped out to people as well. Were there things that jumped out from you guys as you looked through the feedback? Obviously, not all of them were the same, but.
There's a lot. And the feedback that we got from both staff and community members, I think we saw a lot of people who were impressed with the collaborative approaches that Abigail mentioned taking in the work that she does with the community and her CPAC and so forth. That stood out to me. I think there's a lot of talk about the collaboration. I think they both, you know, like you said, we're very fortunate. They're both extremely strong candidates, so we got positive feedback on both candidates. But the collaboration with Abigail, as exhibited in what she spoke about, what she did with her community and her CPAC, really stood out for folks.
Yeah. I know that some of the staff were pleased to see that she had worked as a para, as a special education teacher, and like, kind of worked her way up to she had experience in all the positions that she'd be overseeing, which I think is great for any leader. And I noted that Jennifer had a different path, but still was able to have a lot of different experiences to be a student services director that had a different, like, purview. that had a different purview, but still, you know, same role within her district.
So in terms of kind of where we, is there, are there particular things that people want to highlight that, to bring out in terms of that? Or do you want to kind of jump to the part where we express a preference for one over the other?
I don't. The. I, I also noted that when we, when we talked about Abigail, she had, her tenure was an entire K to, like it's a whole K to twelve experience. She was there for what she thought, said like with the life cycle of the student. And I thought that was interesting. She saw kids go through the whole entire system, right? Which I thought was an interesting way of putting it. And I think is an asset, because like little kids need things that are different than big kids. And to follow a single page, hopefully you're supporting them in ways where they require less and less services, or if they require the same amount of services, you get to support them in new and different ways, right? So I thought that was an interesting perspective and from the staff and from the community.
I can share some thoughts if you.
Oh, yes, that would be great.
I'm wrong about this, but I'll just go to share on both candidates, that's okay. Again, I really enjoyed speaking with both of them. I think they both brought different strengths, but strengths that could be a good asset to the district. For Jennifer, I really valued her openness. I had, she was an excellent listener. In some of the things she talked about that she had done in Harvard, I found, and previously as a, as a principal, I think she demonstrated some innovation and creativity, which I appreciated. She, you know, spoke about how she engenders sort of confidence in her staff. And she's willing to roll up her sleeves and dig in and actually walk the walk and get out there. And if, if she's short a practitioner, she can substitute. But then she can model, you know, best practices for folks if, if there's a professional development opportunity as well. So she, I like, all of that was, you know, really interesting. And I think she was constantly kind of thinking about creative ways to do her job and do it so that all the stakeholders and the students are happy and engaged and the students are being well-served. Those are all my strengths. Some of the things that, you know, I thought were, you know, maybe things we need to look at were just her experiences we've called out. I think she has great experience. I was hoping for a little bit more personally, but her experiences, it was solid. It just wasn't quite as, as much time and role as I would have liked. And just the concern of the scalability from a small district to Hopkinton, just that we are so big and we're undergoing so much change right now, that that makes our world a little bit more complicated in addition to being bigger. So those are a couple of things that there. With Abby, I think she likes to be called Abby, right? So with Abby, of course, we talked about her experience, her collaboration, her thought leadership as a lecturer and a lot of topics that are directly related to how families, CPAC, school committees and administrators work together. Her strength in her zero-based budgeting skills and how she brings all the stakeholders in and, you know, it was interesting. They both had strong budgeting and grant writing skills, but I appreciated Abby's process and the way she described it. Her powerful CPAC in her district that she spoke about and their great, the role that they have and her honesty all kind of stood out as strengths. For me, areas where I was, you know, the sort of thinking a little bit more critically about where the challenges of living in district. I mean, that is a reality that we have, you know, it's hard. People in, in Hopkinton are engaged and to live beside your neighbors and be in this position of authority can be very challenging. So I, and she has children in the district. So I respect that that will be challenging and it'll be hard to keep that distance. And, you know, an odd, not weakness, but like thing I flagged was just the burden of success. And I, by that, I mean for someone who has been very successful, to continue to think creatively and innovatively about how to continue to, to take what you know has worked. But, you know, challenge yourself and make sure that you're continuing to self-assess. Are there new techniques? Just because it worked, you know, ten years ago, just that burden of success. And, and not just going to something that worked before, but also thinking about other things that could work. So those are the, the two areas.
Her experience as a, at Leslie would allow her to remain fresh with ideas.
Maybe, yeah, I don't know. Again, as a lecturer, I'm not sure if she's, you know, updating that, the lectures on a regular basis, or is it, I don't know. And I did cite thought leadership as a positive.
Yeah.
Because I do think that she brings both. And for both candidates, there really weren't obviously a lot of weaknesses for me, which is why, you know, living in the district is not really a weakness. It's also a strength. So anyway, those are my two cents worth, just to get the conversation started.
Yeah, well, she also discussed that, right? Like she was like, I don't know how this is going to look, but I'm hoping I'm being thoughtful in navigating it in an appropriate way. You can't know how you feel, right, until you're there.
Exactly.
Yeah. But I, I, I really appreciate your assessment of it, you know.
Thank you.
Feel free to keep it going.
So, you know, I think kind of looking back to the scaling piece, the size of the district obviously is a big thing. But I, in looking at, they both have some, some common strengths and some, some things that were really impressive. Obviously, they wouldn't have advanced here if they weren't both really strong candidates. And I think they both came across very well in both the smaller meetings that we did as well as in the larger community forum. The, one of the pieces for me that I, I really saw as a plus for Abby is the twelve years that she had with the district, which to me, I'm looking in, in projecting out in our future, we really, I think, want to see somebody who is looking to commit to a district and has, you know, that history of showing a long-term commitment as well as clearly, if she was in a district for twelve years, that district was also committed to her and that, that speaks very highly to me.
I thought it was interesting that she recognized herself. When the, the first grader that she had graduated, it was, she thought, I don't want to renew again. I need, I need a new challenge.
Which I, you know, I think is a great point to come, to kind of come to that and want to have that growth edge while still having had the experience of putting that. I, I also felt like there was a lot of very positive feedback on both candidates. But I, I did feel like the community felt like they were leaning towards Abby.
Yeah.
As well, as well as the staff.
Right.
And that, to me, I think having those perspectives is really helpful to us.
It's too big stakeholder group.
Absolutely. And the experience, you know, obviously, we're kind of making some, some baby steps in terms of our work with CPAC.
Yeah.
And I think that, to me, I feel like Abby has more experience with more kids, more years.
Yeah. And she knows the community really well, so she kind of knows what to expect when she sits in the seat, right?
Yes. And the sense that not just knowing it as somebody who lives in the community, but somebody who clearly has been following and done her homework on what it is that's, you know, Hopkinton has and what it is in looking at vision going forward.
Right.
Yeah. Other, and, and we'd love to hear, I don't know if you wanted to add anything in. Obviously, you both were involved in this process.
No, I think you have two good people. And I think that, you know, for me, you've captured a lot of my thinking.
I think, I've said this a couple of times, Dr. Kavanaugh, other school districts across the state would be envious of our pool.
Yes.
Envious of, of the individuals and the talent that have been interested in joining our community.
Oh, yeah.
Sitting in the smaller group, I was like, this is a very hard decision. We have places that, because we've got incredible people wanting to come here. Where I think, I feel very fortunate to have this discussion. And I'm like, excellence, you know? I'm grateful for it.
Okay, if there are not substantive more comments on that, I would entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Kavanaugh as, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing as I'm speaking, to authorize Dr. Kavanaugh to enter into negotiations with a specific candidate, if somebody would like to make that motion.
I'll motion to authorize Dr. Kavanaugh to enter into negotiation with Abigail Hanscom.
Okay, so motion to enter into negotiations with Abigail, Abigail Hanscom by Holly. Is there a second for that motion? A second by Susan? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it is unanimous in that, thank you very much for, for all of the work that you guys have been doing on this search as well as others. Look forward to hearing the results of the negotiations.
And I think to thank Jennifer too, for spending all our time with us.
Oh, yes.
She was excellent and I'm, I appreciate that.
She was a very good candidate. She, very good, strong candidate. And, you know, again, I think we all spoke to the positive things that we saw in both of them.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I appreciate that everybody has, in not just of us, but also people in the community and the staff, all the time that they have invested in following this process and wanting to share their feedbacks.
Like a wealth of feedback. It was excellent. I was grateful for it.
Okay, that moves us into the Except Voting Member for 2023 and 2024.
Okay, I am asking that you appoint me to serve on the Board of Directors for the Except Collaborative for the 2023-24 school year.
Okay. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Is there a motion that somebody would like to?
Yeah, I'll move to appoint Dr. Kavanaugh to the Except Board of Directors for the 2023 to 2024 school year.
Okay, that is a motion by Holly. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and just for folks at home, this is the Except Collaborative and the Tech Voting Member, which is the next item, are, are something that has to be done annually just by vote of the school committee. And I know there's a timeline that those need to be able to have shown that we've had a committee vote on that. So the next piece is the Tech Voting Member participant for 2023-2024.
Yes, in this one, I'm requesting that the school committee vote to appoint me as the voting member for the Education Collaborative from Hopkinton for the school year 2023-24.
Great. Is there a motion for that?
So, you want?
Motion by Holly, is there a second? Second by Susan, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And that brings us down, a little shift here to the Owners Project Manager for the Hopkins addition, and Ms. Rotherman, that is you.
Thank you. So there is a memo in your packet, and I apologize, I realize that the memo said the addition to the Marathon School. That was my error. Everything else does refer to Hopkins. So there was a request for service that was advertised on March 27th for the Owners Project Manager for the Hopkins addition and renovation project. And the applications were due April 28th. The applicants were given a chance for a walkthrough. We had eleven vendors request the bid package. However, five submitted the bid. The bid document has specific evaluation criteria. And we put together a selection committee that included Dr. Kavanaugh, Mr. Cotter, Principal, Assistant Principal at Hopkins, Mr. LeFave, Principal at the Middle School, Mr. Nash, the Assistant Principal at the Middle School, Mr. Bishop, Principal at the High School, Mr. Person, Director of Building and Grounds, myself, and Mike Shepherd from the Town Building Department. So of the five packages that were submitted, we identified the top three, checked their references and went through interviews with those top three vendors. So in the end, the Vertex Company LLC was ranked the highest. And that is taking all criteria into account, both their bid package, their references, and the interviews. So all three pieces we're looking. So we're entered into fee proposal with the Vertex Company. And at this time, that fee through the bidding phase is $409,462, which does include peripheral, other reimbursable fees such as bid hosting and getting two cost estimates, you know, as we wind our way through the process. So this does fit within the warrant that has been appropriated of the $3 million, which will include both your OPM, design and engineering. So this is just a piece of that project.
Are there questions?
I appreciate the thorough process and I think Vertex has served us very well. We have good, our own good references to support that. Appreciate it.
Agreed. And also acknowledge that there are a lot of pieces around additions and buildings and whatnot that you are personally carrying. So much appreciated.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on this that somebody would like to make?
Well, yeah, I'll move to authorize Director of Finance to negotiate/execute a contract for the Owners Project Manager for the Hopkins School.
Okay, excellent. A motion by Holly, is there a second on that? Second by Susan, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Okay, it is unanimous and passes. And then that brings us into item E, which is the Hopkins donations. And Dr. Kavanaugh, that is you.
Okay, thank you. We have a request for your approval for two things together. One is $12.90 box tops for education and then $1,000 from Pacific Life Foundation. And these have been bound together because they are going to go toward the purchase of iPads for the Hopkins School. So the total approval is $1,012.90.
That's great. I always love when we have another happy piece of talking about donations. And the box tops, I, I know that that's a fraction of what we bring in from box tops donations, but I know that, that's a big clipping all those things out and then counting them out and sending them in is a big job that I think the PTO takes care of that. Right. Any questions or anybody would like to make a motion on that?
I'd move to accept the box top donations and the $1,000 for the new iPads for Hopkins.
So the, technically, just the $1,012.90, just to make sure I get that. Yep. Okay.
Second.
Second, so a motion by Susan and a second by Holly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that is also gratefully accepted. And then there is another, item B under this.
So item B is the Hopkins Fifth Grade Talent Show fundraiser. We have a check from Show Ticks For You Digital Theater LLC in the amount of $4,277.89. And that will go into the Hopkins School gift account.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Is there a, a motion related to that?
Yeah, I'll move to approve a $4,277.89 donation for the Hopkins School gift account.
Okay, motion by Holly, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second by Amanda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that brings us down to item C of E.
Okay, and this is also for the Hopkins School. And again, related to the Fifth Grade Talent Show, but this time you're accepting cash in the amount of $2,028.
Is there a motion on that?
Let's just review. So the Fifth Grade Talent Show earned like six thousand, over $6,000. Was the cash for releases?
Yes, I think so.
I love this. Congratulations to the fifth graders. This is amazing.
That talent show was amazing too.
I didn't see it this year, but I've seen it in the past.
Incredible. Like the talents that fifth graders have, like incredible. And they're so brave too.
Right.
Going in front of their peers and like doing these things that are probably terrifying.
And the kids in the audience are great. They're so supportive. I just, I couldn't let this, I mean, I'm thankful, but we had to just stop for a second and acknowledge.
The room was electric. It was like, it was, and this comes from it as well. Like it was a good event all by itself, but then.
Congratulations to them, that's amazing.
Yeah, before you vote, one day a week, they actually have the fourth graders do different talent things at lunch. And it's really amazing to watch when a kid has the courage to get up in front of all of those kids in that cafeteria and they celebrate one another. It's really great.
It's a great culture that has been built there.
Yes. Do we have a motion on that?
No.
No. Not, not to rush, but I just, it slipped in my, my brain was it the motion before this one.
I'll move to approve a $2,028 for the Hopkins School gift account.
Thank you. A motion by Amanda, is there a second on that? Second by Susan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it gratefully passes. And thank you to all those who worked on making that Fifth Grade Talent Show a reality. I know those, those events take a lot of volunteer effort and hours. That brings us into item F, which is the Hopkinton Education Foundation Grants.
So Chris Fredericks is not here with us tonight, but the Hopkinton Education Foundation, again, so very generous to us. Two proposals were accepted this year. One is who would win for the Elwood Library, and that is in the amount of $8,330. And the second one is the Art of Photography for Hopkinton High School in the amount of $7,332.35. So you can do those two motions separately. But we would love to bring in Colleen Janino, the SML at the high school, Sterling Worrell, and Chris Kellenberger in the fall, after they start, you know, using these materials so they can show you some samples of student work and have Chris come in at that time too.
That's great. Okay. So is there, we'll start with the first one, the HEF grant for Hopkinton Education Foundation grant for who would win for the Elwood Library in the amount of $8,330. Is there a motion regarding that?
Yes, I'll move.
Okay. Motion by Holly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And so that also is unanimous. And then the item B, the Hopkinton Education Foundation grant, the Art of Photography for the Hopkinton High School in the amount of $7,332.35. Is there a motion for that? Motion by Holly. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that is also unanimous and passes also gratefully. I know the Hopkinton Education Foundation does a lot of really great things and has invested a lot in our district.
They make so many innovations possible. Where we can't, we can't really quite justify maybe getting access to this equipment, the photography equipment through the standard budget. But because we are so grateful, you know, we're lucky to have these grants, we can do these things. And, you know, so many kids are going to benefit from this.
Yes. That photomicrography intersects with math and science. It's, it is really cool. I would, I don't know. It taught me something new.
It's exciting.
I can't imagine many schools have this.
That's amazing. Have this like Eva the Anatomy, a cable cramp?
Yes. And that was so cool.
Unbelievable stuff. I don't even know what these ones are about. I'm sure there are things I couldn't even imagine exist.
We will learn.
I'm excited to learn.
So the one thing, then moving on into the next item, which is our calendar.
Is it possible for us to wait?
I was just going to say, I, I feel like it's difficult to make a decision on the calendar without having Adam here to be able to...
For the next two ones.
Yes. But regarding the, this specifically, we had talked, and it's actually not this specifically, it's the June meeting, because I do feel like we want to make sure that we get out there a date for the June meeting. I did not have feedback, I don't think, from anybody that that...
The Monday one?
Monday meeting.
Yeah, I can, I think I...
In that, the Monday, it's...
It's the fifth, I think. Did I make that date up? I could have.
I have to look back at the...
It's possible.
Thing that I sent. It's the fifth. You're correct. Okay. So is that, we will set our next meeting date as Monday, June 5th.
Seven?
We'll do seven unless there's a need for an executive session, which I don't know off the top of my head. And then we can move from there.
Thank you.
So the other, I've got to flip back because I've now flipped pages that I'm looking at here. The other piece that we have on here that I think is important discussion to have a full committee for is the liaison roles for 2023 and 2024. That's, I think, important. It is in the packet for people to consider what pieces and are you're interested in working more on the smaller level as a liaison. And not smaller, but just because it's not the whole committee, I mean, smaller in that way. Liaison interest you have for next year and whatnot. And we can, in my mind, I was thinking we probably wouldn't vote on that even if Adam had been here, because I think it takes a little bit to absorb. And then at our next meeting, we can have a little bit more discussion about what people are interested in and as well as, and any questions that people might have from people who have done a particular role in terms of what it, what it involves time-wise, night, night versus afternoon, what day of the week, et cetera.
I forget, is someone covering ESBC 2 right now?
Yes. So that was, we had voted, I, I did get sworn in. And I will continue to cover that until we come back to discuss it. And then we can figure out, because I know there's a lot of interest in the building committee, so.
I just didn't want to leave a gap.
No, that's exactly why we had that discussion at our, our last meeting, just because both Leah and Jen had been our ESBC 2 representative. So we wanted to make sure that if something came up, there would be somebody able to fill that gap. All right. So that, we are like, I really caught up a little bit. We're not that far behind, I guess. But that, we have no old business listed on the agenda here. So it brings us into items by consensus.
Okay. Superintendent, I recommend the school committee approve the items by consensus as listed in your agenda.
Motion by Holly, a second by Susan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And that then brings us down into adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Into executive session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, to adjourn. Thank you. For the purposes of entering into executive session, for the purpose of complying with or acting under the authority of MGLC 30A 21A to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-unit personnel, the Director of Student Services, because the chair declares that having such a discussion in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the school committee negotiation strategy. And then we are not going to reconvene in regular session. We are going to adjourn from executive session. So is there a motion for that? So the motion by Holly, a second by Susan. And because we're going into executive session, we're required to do a roll call vote. So I'm going to start with you, Susan.
Aye.
Holly?
Yes.
Amanda?
Aye.
I am also an aye. So we are adjourned from the public session at 9:10. I will see hopefully everybody here on Monday, June 5th at 7 o'clock for a public session. Thank you all. And thank you all for, you know, following along with our Director of Student Services and participating. Good night.